Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Suffolk Planning Board to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is required by the United States of America to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda is the sign application for the Social Nest at 32 Lafayette Avenue. Is anyone here for that?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you approach the stand and speak into the microphone? Okay, so you're applying for a sign application. I've seen the sign. And I guess one question, does it, is it the same size as the existing sign?
Same, everything is the same, just the name.
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with this sign? No? All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? The motion is passed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. You have to go to the building department and get a permit to hang it.
Okay, next up we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is for 156-160 Wayne Avenue, a multifamily project. They're here for revised site plan application to open the public hearing. And you received comments from the planner, I believe.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we just got them this morning, so we're still digesting them, but we would be certainly prepared to respond to them in writing. I know one of their comments, you know, asked for more details on the engineering. We have our engineer here this evening if you have any specific questions. But again, as you recall, my name is Dan Richmond. I'm with the law firm Zerrin &amp; Steymetz. And with me this evening is Pete Gato Jr. from Pete Gato &amp; Associates, the projects planner, and Mike Lees, the projects engineering consultant. We presented this board on this project previously. It's a 23-unit townhouse project that's consistent with the zoning that was adopted for the site, and specifically the plan that was adopted for the site. I know we're here for a public hearing, so I'd really like to hand it over to Pete, who can walk through your board again, and I think the public can familiarize them with the project.
Great, thank you. Can you just position the easel so the members of the public can see, please? Thank you.
I'll hold, it's okay. So, I can't see, I don't know where to put these. So, I guess. It's awkward. So, we submitted last month, you got to the planning board, and we received some notes and some comments at the board, and we took them to, back to the office, and we tweaked a few things, and we adjusted some items based on the comments. Also, the day of that board, we received comments from the building inspector and fire chief, which we also looked at and incorporated those comments into the revised site plan. So...
Just a second, just a second.
So, as you can see from the plant, from the site, from the planning board, documents that, the site plan is essentially generally consistent of the same what it was last time, where we central driveway, parking spaces in front of the buildings, and it drives to the end, and then there's grassy areas at the end, and then sort of blocked off area going up towards the hill, and then some recreation areas in between the buildings. What we did change was we tapped one building at the end and rotated around to be aligned with the other buildings, so that on the north side, so that we could afford a different plan on that the fire department requested. Similarly, we increased some of the green space in between, between the items, between the buildings, to allow for space, light, and air in between each building. Again, these are modest, two-and-a-half-story buildings, two-story buildings, and we tried to design the buildings themselves to have architectural character relevant to the neighborhood, and the ends of the buildings that face the street, we treat them as fronts of houses, so driving by resemble the scale and composition of houses rather than the size of a building. There'd be proper screen on all sides, but yet allow access, the fire department to access the back should they have to. Essentially, and we also clarified, we were able to clarify the walkway entrance into the building, that was a comment on the board, I think is a good one, to not make sure that there's a separate ADA space stripe, which is separate from the walkway area into the building, so therefore the walkway entrance into the building won't be blocked if, should a car get too close. And that's essentially it. I can run through the elevations and planning sections, wherever else you need to have the drawings with me.
Okay. I see we have members of the public here.
Do you want to ask the board members if they have anything before the public?
Does the board have anything to say about the revised plans we received? Okay. I see we have members of the public here. Would anybody like to speak about this project? If you would, please approach the lectern and speak into the microphone, state your name and address. Hey.
Hi, my name is Michael Abramow. I reside at 30 Pavilion Road in Suffolk, and I have some notes here that I just want Okay. I generally like this project. It's medium-density housing, which I think that we need more of in this area, rather than single-family. I like that there is decent green space retained on the property, not overdeveloped with pavement. Especially important, given that it's next to the park. I also live next to the park. I like that there is consideration for a crosswalk, which, there are minimal crosswalks on Wayne Avenue, once you leave the downtown village area. Like I said, I live on Pavilion Road, there's no crosswalk there. When I go into town, I, you know, have to try my luck crossing the traffic there, on foot or on my bicycle. And so hopefully this will be a good option for new families that played, plan to stay in the area for a long time. So, what I did... Testing, hello?
It's on.
It's on? Okay. I can't hear myself. Okay. So, some of my concerns, where are, where are kids gathering for, to wait for the bus, for example? So, it looks like, I can't quote, maybe there's some changes from last month. I see that now there is a bit of a sidewalk here. My comment referencing last month's diagram, which it's changed a little bit, is that I'd like to see just a designated area for students to wait for the bus. Wayne Avenue 202 is a very busy road, we all know. We see stopped trucks there, we see cars speeding down the highway 202 all the time, exceeding the speed limit. There's no real traffic calming measures all along that stretch at all. When I say traffic calming measures, I'm referring to narrowing the roadways, or raised crosswalks, or traffic circles, stuff like that, that's what I mean when I say traffic calming. I did have a comment about the fire emergency service access, but it sounds like they did reach out to the fire department, so I won't mention any of that. And, in general, so those are my specific comments with this project. In general, I do think that Suffolk does have some issues pertaining to congestion, traffic, lack of walkability outside of the immediate village area. Like I said, I'm just outside the village downtown area, and it's very busy, and, you know, lots of people that I talk to that reside in Suffolk don't feel safe, just like walking into town, for example, even if there is a sidewalk that they can take. And, so I'm wondering if firstly, maybe there could be for, for students looking to take the bus, maybe there could be like a designated waiting area that's set back from the street a little bit, even if it's just like a covered bench or something next to. I see that there is a, like I said, a sidewalk here now. And I'm also wondering whether the village would be open to modifying the crosswalk, where now it's just paint on the road, to something like a raised crosswalk, and start implementing traffic calming measures for vehicles coming into the village to bring down the speeds. In my opinion, I'll just close with this, we need to make it more convenient and safer for people to travel. The town, village slogan is "All roads lead to Suffolk," and if that's true, it means all traffic, noise, air pollution also leads to Suffolk. I live here, I want to stay here, I have no plans on leaving, it's where I want to be. And hopefully it's a place that people moving into this development will also want to move to and stay for a long time and raise their families here. With that in mind, I think that generally an effort could be made to improve safety for people just getting around outside of their cars. Otherwise Suffolk is a throughway and not a destination. That's it.
Thank you for those comments. Does anyone else have anything to say about this project? Would you like to come up and speak? Anyone? No?
So, yeah, I mean, right.
No, we have someone, and, you know, I should have mentioned it before, but we have a three-minute time limit. We'll just set, it's just three-minute time limit on speaking and all.
First of all, I'd like to just reiterate everything that these...
Your name, and address.
And talk into the mic, Ellen. Put it down for yourself. How's that? Hello?
Yes.
My name is Ellen Killey. I live on Lexington Avenue in Suffolk, and I just, I agree with the fellow that just spoke about the safety concerns. I don't see in the plan a sidewalk on that particular property, and you know people coming out of that with families or whatever, heading to the pool or heading to the park, they're going to have to cross 202, or somehow get down 202. And I would love to see a sidewalk on this section here. Just because we live in that area, and we know that the traffic on 202 is very speedy, and I really, really worry about children living in that area in this particular situation crossing that road. Again, if they could do something to mitigate that, that would be great. Also, we haven't had a hundred-year flood in a few years, but you know that that area tremendously floods. I'm not sure if these townhouses have living space on the bottom floor or whatever, or whether that's a parking garage or what it is. It doesn't look like it's a parking garage. It looks like there's parking spaces there. But there is tremendous, there has been years where we've had tremendous flooding in not only that green space that you've provided, but beyond that green space, which I don't, I don't know how you're going to mitigate that drainage, it just floods, seriously floods. And whether the people that purchase these units will be able to purchase flood insurance at a reasonable rate to accommodate the very likely potential that within the next 25 years or whatever, that that area will flood again. And I have pictures of that area completely flooded. So those would be my two major concerns, the safety and the flooding in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak about the project?
So, I'm just gonna, before the applicant gets up, just so everybody's aware, maybe you want to get up, either Dan or Peter, but, you know, we have the comments from Nelson Pope and also county planning. I know, Dan, you just said you got them just this morning, so I think the intention is to continue the public hearing, give you an opportunity to address the comments of Nelson Pope, the county planning, and any comments here. Also, and so, you know, that would probably be appropriate in terms of the next steps.
Yes, so, but just to clarify, the county planning comments, the last one I saw are from January, that's the only one on the website. Are there more recent ones?
No, whatever, I'm just saying, whatever...
I need a flash drive of everything which you gave me recently, so that's got to go back over now, because you changed things...
And we'll get more comments from the county.
To get the comments on this new plot plan.
Yes, so we anticipate addressing, you know, if we get additional county planning, certainly we'll address that. The Nelson Pope, we plan on addressing, including the engineering comments, so, you know, if you could adjourn, obviously to a date certain, so we don't need to renotice.
Did anybody have questions or anything that you want to ask?
No. In terms of what the gentleman was asking about, is there a plan for some type of sidewalk on 202, along with somewhere for students to, you know, be safe in that area?
Two very good points, and every project we deal with, it has its exact questions. So, the first point, this side of the street where we are, there's no sidewalk on either side of the property. So essentially, if we did a sidewalk to us, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere. So we thought, rather than that, there's a sidewalk already established on the other side of the street, going both directions in different directions, that's what we thought. In terms of the bus stop, we had at one point a little gazebo in the front to keep them out of the rain, also sort of a physical signal to say this is a slowdown part, so we could look to bring that back up in the front. Sure.
Thank you.
The flooding came up in the original plan application. Is there, I can't remember how it was addressed. Do you recall how you're, do you know how you're addressing it in this plan?
In these plans, no, I don't recall the original. I know it's, we're going to mitigate, keep all water on site, and find technical solutions to that, those items, so.
All right, in order to get secret approval and further approval, you need a zero net increase, so...
Sure, yes, we have, we know.
...from, presumably your engineer will...
Yeah, our engineer. Certainly will have a SWIP.
Right, well, you don't need a SWIP for the secret, but you certainly, you know, we need something in order to move it forward, if it's going. Okay. Adjourn the public hearing?
Yeah. So, they can make a motion to adjourn the public hearing for this project?
I'll make the motion.
Until May 21st. Do I have a second? Dan is the second?
Sorry, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Well, I'll second.
Dan seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes.
It says, when is the submission deadline for the May 21st meeting?
That might be a little tight.
Two weeks before.
Two weeks prior.
Two weeks before.
The meeting's 21st?
Two weeks prior to the 21st. I gave leniency this time.
That'll be the 7th, May 7th.
But the hearing is the 21st, so you're not going to get further notice, it's just continued to the 21st, if anybody wants to come back.
Okay? Wonderful, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Next up is a public hearing for La Chocolat at 1 Ramapo Avenue. Do we have anybody here for that project? Yeah, it's already been announced. And could you just orient the easel so the audience can see? And I understand you got comments this morning from the village planner, is that correct?
Well, I guess, let me just introduce myself first. Pat Loftus appearing for Ira Emanuel for Laurel Road in City, New York, who is the attorney of record on the matter. I did speak to Mr. Emanuel about it this afternoon. He did not say to me that he had received comments recently. I don't know...
Yeah, I also, Avi Weinberg, Weinberg Lim Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. I was out for Passover, just got back today also. I did not get anything. I did not receive anything.
Okay. There's, in your application, there's a designated person that everything is supposed to go to for the application, and it is under fast-forward under Mendy. So Mendy got everything this morning.
Okay.
So if he didn't pass it on, I assumed he would pass it on to you guys.
Okay, I will clarify that.
If you want to give me emails and stuff, I can make sure you get copies as I send them out to him, but it's, we go by that designated application.
Good, so I think it would make more sense going forward to add additional emails. I think in this situation, because of Passover, I don't know if it would have helped now, but it definitely is better going forward to make sure we all get it.
Okay.
Did you have any changes or anything that you wanted to discuss tonight, or you want to do a submission based upon what the planner put in?
We do not. We came here, we know we're opening the public hearing, and we, you know, wanted to get some comments from the public.
Okay. Would anybody from the public like to speak about this project? If you do, please step to the lectern, state your name and address.
It would be really nice if you...
Oh, actually, yeah, no, you should run through it. You should run through the project. Please do that. Yes. Okay. Yeah, Sam, yeah. We'll have the applicant himself explain it.
I'm going to try to explain this to Sam. I have, first I had a chocolate company up in Chestnut Street. We grew, we bought the Metropolitan vacuum building on 1 Ramapo Avenue, and as I said last time, it's great to be in such a village with safety. And I want to introduce this myself, that, thank God, that we are growing, we have some issues with the warehousing stuff, that's only, you know, it's boxes and packaging, and it's a food company, so it needs to be more organized, and as I was getting from the state, I should make more, it should be more spacious. And the only thing, what we need is the other floors that we're making for should be higher. I don't know if it's going to be too much of, more, too much more deliveries, or too much more going out for the next couple of years, but it takes time to build, and the plan was worked out very much with the planning board all the time, it was Corona in that time. And as we went through in the middle with, that Avi, the guy retired, and Avi came in in engineering, worked out that should be a parking lot that should be nice built, it should, shouldn't see anything like a parking lot, it's going to be a basement parking lot, which everybody knows the hill goes down, and it's going to be then a straight-level parking lot, taken around with a nice fence, as it shows in the picture, I don't know if it's colored over here, but...
I'll explain.
Avi will walk through, and we're talking here, getting all the big trucks, whatever comes to delivery, will go still down, and have the three garage doors down by the ball field, so if, and it's going to be an elevator going up, commercial elevator, so it shouldn't interrupt traffic, anything else than it was. The only thing is that it will be a higher ceiling and more space, and more parking for the people, it's going to be walking distance, and we're going to try to move up the manufacturing on the second floor, so, as everybody knows, it's a little bit scary flooding a lot of times. We had almost coming in the water inside, and the main thing is that the area is a really nice safety area, and it can't be better to have a factory more than Suffolk. And I would appreciate if anybody has comments, and Avi is really, really came through for everybody to accommodate them with what they needed and what we can make it. It should be looking at the most precise that could be looked.
Wonderful, thank you. Can the architect, before we start, can you just run through your plans and drawings so the audience can see?
Yeah. So as Sam explained, we've got a one-story building now with a basement, and he...
Hold on, just let him finish, and then you'll...
Yeah, let me, let him run through it, and then...
We're on the record, so you can't just ask questions there, sir.
Let me just give an overall explanation, and then you could ask questions. Okay, so we've got this existing building that exists right now, it's a one-story building with a basement. The applicant wants to push the building up, keep the same footprint, just push up. As Sam said, it's not to expand operations, he simply needs more room. The first floor is kind of dicey, if it's even operable or not. Some storage there we could put, you know, we need room for more storage, and because of the flooding, we don't want to use that ground floor too much. We want to raise the manufacturing, bring that all up. I've been in this facility, it's producing yummy delicious chocolate, as I'm sure many of the members and the audience has tried, but it needs some modernization. One of the things that the applicant also wants to do is to provide parking. Currently, there is no parking, you know, every time I've been there, people have been parking all around here on the baseball fields. The applicant would like to provide parking. Originally, the plans for this building were much more grand, we were spoken about having a cafe here, which as much as I think many in this room would like, you know, the regulations would not permit it. The applicant also originally wanted a three-story parking garage to provide extra parking for, you know, to lease spaces for the train, you know, for the train station across the street. That was eliminated, as the village did not want that as well. So we now have this two-story building and a two-story parking structure. Now I want to be very clear, when we talk about a two-story parking structure, it is two stories down. You've got your ground floor, which would essentially be at grade, especially to the year at Park Place, it would be at grade, and below it, in a basement dug down, because there is a grade change there, would be a second level of additional parking. And just to highlight what Sam said, to protect all the neighbors, we are providing, you know, screening with landscaping all along the property line here, to maintain, you know, nice visual effects, and to minimize any view, you know, any noise or anything like that, you know, that the neighbors might experience. So there is a, you know, we've got this row of trees, of the green giants, that are running along to protect any of the neighbors. Like I said, we're keeping the original footprint and just raising the building up. Okay? If anyone has any questions, we'd like to hear them.
Do you have any elevations or anything you want to show, or is...
No, like, in actual, like renderings or something like that?
Maybe, yeah, see if they...
Yeah. I do have two, I could maybe pass them around, one's in color, one's not, I'll pass them to you guys, and then...
Well, no, no, just for the public. Oh, okay. All right. Does anybody, would anybody like to speak about this project? If you would, could you please step to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and it's a two, three-minute time limit?
My name's Beth Copel, and 30 West Maltby Avenue, I've been here 27 years. I'm seeking to adjourn this meeting for another time, because the public was not properly notified. The one sign... Date and time of hearing, 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. Could somebody tell me when that is? Because this meeting shouldn't be held right now. Our neighborhood was not properly notified.
Okay. Carry on.
Are we carrying on or are we continuing?
Continue. Just continue your comments.
Okay. I can't help but say this. We're, we're gonna actually destroy a house to put up a parking lot. Joni Mitchell would be really happy to hear this. How much can a neighborhood actually infringe upon a neighborhood? We're 1% manufacturing and about 90%, if not more, 99% if not more neighborhood. If they're putting in extra storage, they're also gonna be shipping more. That means trucks that are gonna be on our streets, which are really not meant for a trucking lane. It's gonna take our entire neighborhood and make it a trucking thoroughfare, because if you can't get a truck through the Chestnut Ridge overpass, we'll start over there. We have a three-story building that he's talking about. If the bottom level of the basement is unusable, then why don't you use that for parking? From what I was able to see, there really, it seems like there's gonna be well over 50 spots for this location. That just doesn't seem consistent with something that's not gonna tax our roads. It's also, it's also, if they're gonna increase storage, they're gonna increase manufacturing, as he, as he also spoke about. Manufacturing taxes the water department and the wastewater department. I appreciate the chocolate odor over, you know, every once in a while that goes over the wastewater odor, but we all know that the wastewater plant is well overtaxed on its own. Who's paying for that?
You just have 30 seconds left, just to warn you.
Okay. Also, one more thing about not having proper notification is that this was not posted online, and Lisa Golehew, the 12th of this month, had to actually email the village and ask for what day and time this meeting was going to be.
Okay. That's time? Joanne, just in response to that, can you describe what the notification procedure is?
Yes. Notification on.
Good speaker. You need to be in the mic.
Notification on the planning board is not within a 200 or 500 radius. It's a budding and across the street. So we don't contact all the neighbors. We can expand it if the board wants to do that, but we don't do that. It was also posted in the newspaper on Sunday, the 13th. It was posted in the newspaper. We do it on Sunday because most people get a weekend paper. And other than that, that's what was there. The date being left off was an error, and I can apologize for that, but it was posted in other places and.
Where? I live on West Maltby Avenue, and I walk my dog continuously.
It only has to be around the property.
I walk my dog all the way over there all the time. I never see anything but that one single notification that, by the way, was knocked over and not legible anyway.
Well, there were four posters or five posters that were given to them to post. I.
That's what I said.
I understand, I said that was an error. That was an error.
So that's a problem. It should be adjourned if there was an error in notification.
It's gotta be adjourned. Is there anybody else who wants to speak?
Hi. My name is Mike Befardi. I live on 5 Meadow Avenue. I've been there well over 30 years. As, just all due respect to the board, as far as the notices that were up, it rained that day they put them up. The notice was actually bent over. I actually had to go over to it and pick it up to see that it was a notice of hearing. Okay? All right. So there's not that many people working in the factory now, so if they're gonna have 50 spots, are they gonna be renting out any of the spots to commercial people is what I'm wondering? The commuters and stuff? No commuter parking at all?
All right. You should direct your comments here, and then we'll.
All right. So there's no gonna be, no, what, 50 spots? So why do they need 50 spots for a factory that size?
We'll take all your comments and then respond.
Okay. And then the other question was, so right now there's tall trees there, and the tall trees are the only things that actually blocks the west ward from seeing all the ball fields down there. So they're gonna knock all those trees down. Okay? And then the other one was, it's gonna be more commuters back and forth, as they were saying before. The trucks are gonna be coming, there's gonna be more commuters there. So, and one thing that I don't understand is that right now there's a parking problem where the signs aren't even followed as far as no parking between 7:00 and 9:00. If they're gonna be more people coming there, there's gonna be more commuters parking on the local streets, and that's my problem.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
If you want to see a picture of the poster, what it look like? I don't know if you do.
No, it's all right. I believe you. I think we're gonna have, we're gonna ask that additional notifications be posted, because this is gonna be carried over till next month, and we want to make sure the public is aware. Does anyone else from the public, if I want to speak? Please come to the lectern, state your name and address for the record.
Is this the side that's gonna be on West?
Sorry, sorry. Can you state, Henry, can you state your name and address for the record?
I live at 5, 7 West Park Place, Suffolk.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this the front of, I have to look at and from my house? Because I live at West Park Place. Is this the garage facing me?
It is, but again, it's gonna be greenery. You're not gonna see it.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be greenery.
Greenery in front of this.
That's shown on the plan.
And also, is, you're just gonna build down below? You're gonna make ground down below?
Yes.
But the only thing you have to worry, your building on the other side has water. Sometimes it goes all the way up to the top of the second floor. So I'm just telling you. That's why you have to build this garage. You have to. And they'll place the park.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. So you just got the planner's comments, or you're going to get them shortly. So I think we'd like to give you opportunity to respond to those. So we're gonna hold over this public hearing till next month, till May 21st.
Sure. But can I just respond to a couple of the comments?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Right now, Mr. Rottenberg has some space in Airmont, some storage space, and he has trucks going back and forth between the two. As such, consolidating his storage, especially from COVID, Mr. Rottenberg learned that he wants to have more of his supplies in-house, on-site, as opposed to, you know, waiting for deliveries, because as we all know, supply chains could get interrupted. Right now, he's got trucks shuttling back and forth between the two. The plan is to consolidate these, so there will be less truck traffic. I should also point out that when we were originally here for the board, in front of this board, we had shown nine loading docks, because based on the calculations, that is what was required by code. And we all together came to the realization that we don't need nine loading docks. We don't have that much truck traffic, so we pared it down to five. A couple of things about, you know, basement parking. This is an existing building. You can't retrofit this building to put parking in the basement. You just, you know, we need a new parking area. This building's been around for a long time, and you can't just simply, you know, say, oh, well, you know, you can't utilize the basement such as parking there. That just doesn't work. I just wanted to talk about those points. And again, to the gentleman that was here before asking about the elevations, we are proposing a line of shrubbery along here that will be blocking the view from any of the neighbors on West Park Place. So I just want to put that out there. Like I said, with the storage, we are consolidating, so that there will be less chocolate traffic.
All right. Thank you very much. So I'm gonna make a motion to carry this over till next month on May 21st. If I could also just ask one more thing. Are we also able to get referred? We do have a bunch of variances that we need. Are we able to get referred to the zoning board?
No. No, because you have to have a secret negative declaration before you get any variances. So I think tidy up whatever you need to tidy up with the planner and/or Rockland Planning. You know, you can contact the planner directly, but most people do a narrative or, you know, narrative response and then contact them. But after you get a negative declaration, the board would then be in a position to refer it.
Understood. Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to carry this over to May 21st. I'd also like to include in that motion that the applicant repost the signs in the area and send out additional notices. The community is upset that they didn't feel like they were notified, so if you could do that, that would be great. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Dan? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much.
So it's May 21st at 7:00 PM.
Excuse me. How far out are we?
Thank you so much.
May 21st at 7:00 PM. No, they're just doing the posters and the same neighbors that they're required to.
Not the neighbors who.
No, I understand, but the posters are there. The legal requirement is the posters.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not extending.
And it should be posted on the website as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next up is JP Morgan Chase Bank, amended site plan application for the installation of two solar carports in the parking lot. Do we have anybody here for that?
She couldn't get.
Yeah. I know this was put on because it went to the ZBA and it got approval, but I don't, there was a mix-up with the communication this week, so I'd recommend we put that over for a month and address it at the next meeting.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, I would just make a motion tomorrow.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to place the JP Morgan Chase Bank application on the, amended site plan application on the May 21st agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next up and last for the evening is 78 East Maltby Avenue. Do we have anybody here for 78 East Maltby Avenue? Okay.
This was not a public hearing, right? You didn't send it around, Joanne?
Not a public hearing, no, but.
Did he know it was on?
I told him when he had the stuff, it'll be on the 23rd, but I don't know what he did, so.
All right. Probably makes sense to put it over then.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to hold this over to the May 21st meeting of the Suffolk Planning Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dan? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And any miscellaneous business, old business or new business?
Do you have anything, Joanne?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to schedule the next meeting of the Suffolk Planning Board for May 21st at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Helper. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting of the Suffolk Planning Board. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Helper. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, everyone.